This is the regular meeting of the Cape Girardeau City Council. Thank you all for appearing here tonight. We will begin with the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance. With our invocation is Pastor Timothy Lee of the Apostolic Promise Church in Cape Girardeau. If you would all please rise.
Well, we thank you for this opportunity to pray tonight. God, in this room, in this place, for our people, that devoted their skill, their talent, their wisdom, their prowess, their legal minds, their community desires to improve. God, and all that together can cause great things to happen. But ultimately, we believe that if you put your hand to blessing, when everything we attempt to do, God, it goes in much greater and more dynamic fashion. Tonight, we ask your blessing on every decision, every individual, to be prompted by your Spirit, led by the word of God, be put your blessing in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. We have no study session tonight. We do have a number of presentations. First, we will have a presentation on employee health and dental insurance by Mr. Dave Johnson of CBiz.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'm Dave Johnson with CBiz. We're the benefits consulting firm that's worked with the city for several years now. Tonight, we're going to talk about two plan renewals, which will be effective January 1st, the dental plan and the medical plan. I'm not sure, where's, okay, does that come up on the screen, or is that something that...
Nicolette, do we have anything to put up? Or not?
I have no idea.
Okay. Then probably not.
Okay, then I'll tell you about it.
Yeah, we'll just look forward to hearing all about it.
You will see two documents for each plan. The first one I'll talk about is the dental plan. Both of your plans are self-funded, which simply means the administrator you hire pays the claims for you, and you pay an administrative fee for them to do that. And so, you set, based on recommendations from us and based on recommendations from city staff, where the premium rates will be to support the risk, if you will. So for the dental plan this year, there is a slight increase in the administrative fee from the dental insurance company, which is Delta Dental of Missouri. That's the first time they've increased the fee in three or four years now. It's an annual cost of about thirteen hundred extra dollars. The plan runs very well. It's a very nice benefit plan. A few years ago, you added a PPO component to the plan, so that if employees choose to go to a PPO provider, they're going to get a better discount, and so they will pay less out of pocket, and the city will pay less out of pocket for those particular claims. And the plan has run very well. It really runs on a surplus annually, so our recommendation is just to leave the rates as they are, and that will support the risk, and that will move on, just as it has in the past. So, any questions specific to the dental plan? You'll see, eventually, there's a package which has the agenda report that Gina has put together. That's where the action is, and then there's just a letter from CBiz behind that that talks about the claims experience, et cetera.
And we have received those.
I'm sorry?
We have received those.
Okay, great. The second, any further questions on the dental plan? Okay, that's the easy one. Health insurance, not as easy. Again, self-funded plan, insurance company, or the third-party administrator. Anthem Health provides administration of the plan, so they process all the claims that are incurred by employees to a specific plan of benefits. There are four different plans that employees can choose from. Two of those plans are, well, let me describe it this way. There's an HSA and a PPO plan with a larger, a more broad network, a little more expensive, but still very competitive for employees. And then there's a more narrow network that is, confines the employees to a more narrow network of providers, which is a little bit less expensive because they've negotiated higher discounts. Employees have the choice at open enrollment time, which is right now, before the end of the year to be effective, January 1, and that will run for 12 months. Expenses have gone up a little bit this year. Your claims have gone up, your total claims have gone up by a little over 5%. Unfortunately, you've lost members in the plan, you just have fewer employees now, and so on a per-member-per-month basis, actually, claims have gone up by around 14% on a per-member-per-month basis. There are components in the plan, there's an administrative cost, that's actually going to go down a little bit this year because the insurance company, Anthem in this case, is going to receive some more prescription drug rebates, and so they're going to pass those on to you in the form of a reduction in the administrative fee. There is going to be an increase for the individual stop-loss, which is, in the plan, any claim that's over $150,000 is removed from the plan, and the insurance company pays for that. There is an increase in cost for that. There's an, you also have an overall maximum, which is a relatively small cost. That cost is going up a little bit. And then your overall plan maximum, what the insurance company is going to protect you for those overall claims, is going to go up a little bit this year. Now, city staff has looked at this, we've looked at this. We believe that the current funding you have is going to protect you for the next year. So, we'll be watching that pretty closely over the next, I know your budget goes 7-1 as opposed to the plan year of 1-1, but we'll be able to look at that for the first several months, or for the next several months, make sure we know where the funding is, and make sure that we're, obviously, everyone is keeping a close eye on that. Based on everything that's happened at the city over the last year, it's really important to everyone that the plan design stays the same as it is today, as well as the rates or the contributions on the part of the employee toward the cost of the plan. So, while there will be some internal cost increases, that should be taken care of by the funding that exists on the plan right now. We will talk after the beginning of the year. At times, we have reviewed the market, we've done that probably three to four times over the last six years or so, and we'll talk about that again right after the first of the year, and determine if that makes sense, to look at that for 1-124. Well, that was quick, but certainly would answer any questions you might have.
It was succinct.
Can't be that good.
So, our total claims increased by 5.6%, but our overall, because of employees' number being smaller...
Right.
Is decreased, correct?
Well, the overall claims have gone up by a little over 5%. So, X from last year, this year, X plus 5% total. That's misleading, because you have fewer employees, and I can't remember the number that you've dropped by, but it's been, let's see, members have gone down by 12%. So, when you have fewer members, but you have higher claims, obviously, on a per-member basis, that's gone up.
Right.
So, that's the, that's, we want to make sure everyone's aware, that claims have gone up this year, and they've gone up on a per, it's not just the 5.6%, it's a little bit higher than that because of that, because of the loss of employees.
What is the bottom, whenever we look at, I know there's those, the aggregate increases, when we get down to the end of it, what is the total increase for us from last year to this year?
So, very complicated, very simple question, very complicated answer to that. You won't know until a year from now.
All the claims.
Yep. So, that's why we, we provide monthly reports to city staff to show where you are. So, now, we have claims up through about August, I think, and we show where you stand versus, because right now, what you're approving is those individual rates that, if you will, council pays to the fund, and employees for either buying up coverage or dependent coverage pay to the fund to cover the cost. The internal costs under there are going up a little bit, but everyone feels that there's enough funded right now that we can cover that. If not, you'll have to come up with extra money, and we won't really know that. I mean, really, we don't know for '23 yet, and we won't know that until January, sorry, we don't know '22 yet, I apologize. We don't know '22 yet, so we'll know in January, February, exactly how '22 went. And then, now, what I can tell you is, in all those prior years, you've done really well. You've theoretically should have a surplus that has developed over the years. Now, sometimes you have to spend that money on other things, but should have a surplus on that account, you should be protected for '22, and based on these numbers, should be protected for '23, but we'll know in early '24.
So, that the 5.6% increase that we had came from overfunding from previous?
Well, the 5.6 is just how much your claims have gone up.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, and, and in the past, those surpluses have developed because, I hate to say overfunding, it's just, you, you were lucky and had a surplus. And that's what...
And that's what matters to the council, or we've been under previous...
Yes, exactly.
Claims that have not been...
Exactly. Unfortunately, this isn't uncommon right now, but we're coming out of something that's happened over the past two or three years. Some people have delayed some things, we've had some things come in. You did have a couple of fairly large claims. Now, you're protected by that $150,000 mark, so you're protected from that, but you're of a size that you do go in cycles, and we're in one of those cycles, depending on how you look at either, at the top of a mountain or a really bad valley.
Okay. Yeah. Any other questions? Thanks very much, appreciate it.
Thank you, and I really appreciate, every time I come down here, you guys are so pleasant to me, and you always put me first on the agenda, so I really appreciate that. And I hope, no offense to anyone here, I'm going to scoot out. So, thank you very much.
You put your work in, all right. Thank you. Okay. All right, we have a few other presentations, I'm going to come on down. All right, so next, we have a presentation that we will be making to the Zonta Club. I see there are members here. If you all, whoever would like to, come forward, everybody, come on up, yeah, we got, we got room. We got room. I'm hiding my blue in the back. Where are you going there, little miss? Yeah. Well, this is a presentation for the 16 Days of Activism, Zonta Says No to Violence Against Women. And it states, "Whereas, as citizens of this community, we recognize that the worldwide problem of violence against women occurs even here in Cape Girardeau, and whereas gender violence is traumatic to the body, mind, and spirit, and can prevent people from being fully active participants at home and in the world. And whereas gender violence devastates relationships, families, communities, workplaces, schools, neighborhoods, villages, cities, and towns. And whereas gender violence costs the nation billions of dollars annually in medical expenses, police and court costs, shelters and foster care, sick leave, absenteeism, and non-productivity. And whereas, in spite of some progress, we need only look at our newspapers or watch a TV newscast to see the unfortunate truth that gender violence has not yet been eliminated here or around the world. And whereas, we support the efforts of individuals and organizations, such as the Zonta Club of Cape Girardeau, to raise awareness, stimulate discussion, and advocate for local solutions that will curb gender violence. And whereas, these Zontians stand in solidarity with thousands of others from around the world to assert that the right of women and men to be free of violence is a fundamental human right. Now therefore, it be it resolved that I, Stacy Kinder, Mayor of the City of Cape Girardeau, Missouri, do hereby proclaim the 16 days between International, excuse me, International Day to Eliminate Violence Against Women on November 25, 2022, and International Human Rights Day on December 10, 2022, as the 16 Days of Activism, Zonta Says No to Violence Against Women, in the City of Cape Girardeau, Missouri, and I call upon all citizens and civic organizations to support work to end gender violence, and to eliminate the detrimental consequences gender violence has on the well-being of our community." Thank you all. And would you, if you'd like to say more?
Good evening, I'm Jessica Hill. I am the advocacy committee chair for our Zonta Club of Cape Girardeau, and on behalf of our Zonta Club and the Golden Z Club of Southeast Missouri State University, we thank the city council for issuing this proclamation, and we also thank the agencies that work each day to prevent and care for victims of abuse, the CMO Network Against Sexual Violence, Safe House of Southeast Missouri, all of our law enforcement agencies and members of the legal and healthcare professions. We're saddened to know that Missouri is sixth in the nation for the rate of women murdered by men. We still have much work to do when one in four women experience violence by a partner. And we invite you and encourage you to join us on Thursday, December 1st, at 5:30 PM, to honor those victims at our candlelight vigil, to stand in solidarity and bring attention to the epidemic of gender-based violence. Our event will be at Capaha Parks Liberty Corner in Cape Girardeau, and we thank you for noting the 16 Days of Activism and supporting this cause. Thank you.
Got it. All right, thank you all very much. Thank you.
That's probably a little bit overwhelming.
Oh, that's okay. Fairly enough. Okay, we do have two more presentations. Take a moment, let people escape while they can. Okay. It's going to cool off in here a little bit. Room. Okay, well, the next proclamation or presentation is the Small Business Saturday proclamation, and we have Liz Haynes from Old Town Cape to receive that. Come on up, Liz. Welcome. Okay, and the proclamation reads, "Whereas, Cape Girardeau celebrates our local small businesses and the contributions they make to our local economy and community, and whereas local small businesses form the backbone of our economy, generating jobs and improving the quality of life for citizens. And whereas, according to the United States Small Business Administration, there are currently 32.5 million small businesses in the United States. Small businesses represent 99.7 of firms with paid employees. Small businesses represent, or, excuse me, small businesses are responsible for 62% of net new jobs created since 1995, and small businesses employ 46.8% of the employees in the private sector of the United States. And whereas, 79% of consumers understand the importance of supporting their small business in their community. On Small Business Saturday, 70% report the day makes them want to encourage others to shop small, independently-owned retailers, and 66% report that the day makes them want to shop small all year long. And whereas, 58% of shoppers reported they shopped online with a small business, and 54% reported that they dined or ordered takeout from a small restaurant, bar, or cafe on Small Business Saturday in 2021. And whereas, Cape Girardeau recognizes the critical role of small business and supports the efforts of local businesses that create jobs, boost our economy, and cultivate and preserve our community. And whereas, advocacy groups, as well as public and private organizations across the country, have endorsed the Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday. Now therefore, it be it resolved that I, Stacy Kinder, Mayor of the City of Cape Girardeau, Missouri, do hereby proclaim November 26, 2022, as Small Business Saturday, and urge the residences, excuse me, the residents of our community, not only to support small businesses and merchants by shopping at these establishments on Small Business Saturday, but to support and strengthen our small business community throughout the year." Liz, thank you for representing all of that. A lot of data from everyone on share. Very quickly, yes.
I just wanted to also recognize, though, Old Town Cape is here to accept this award for the over 300 businesses in our downtown district, that Rob is also here representing the Cape Chamber, and we have small businesses across our entire community, and they're a vital part of our local economy, and I'm just very encouraged, even despite the challenges the pandemic brought on, that are, there's really a recognition in our community that those small businesses are a vital part of our community, and we had, in 2021, when the pandemic was still a factor, we had over 21 businesses just in the downtown district alone. So, it's really exciting, and I really appreciate this, this proclamation and this recognition, and it takes a village, and we have a great one.
Thank you. Pictures. And thanks to Old Town Cape for all of the work you guys do on that front. We have one more proclamation. It is the National Injury Prevention Day proclamation. Be Smart will be represented by Leslie Washington and Geneva Allen Patterson. And any others are here? Okay, just you guys. Great. Welcome. Last but not least, "Whereas, injuries are the leading cause of death and disability to U.S. children ages 1 to 18, and whereas, the City of Cape Girardeau is committed to creating a safe environment, contributing to the safety and well-being of our children. And whereas, an estimated 54% of gun, gun owners do not lock all their guns securely, and an estimated 4.6 million children live in a home with at least one unlocked and loaded gun. And whereas, almost every single day, a child gets their hands on a gun and unintentionally kills or injures themselves or someone else in the U.S. And whereas, research shows that the best way to protect children and teens from accessing guns is to implement secure firearm storage practices. Whereas, hospitals, state agencies, and community organizations are committing, committed to their crucial role in reducing injuries and death by promoting safe practices. And whereas, National Injury Prevention Day raises awareness and promotes efforts to reduce injuries among children. The City of Cape Gerardo, Cape Girardeau commends Be Smart, a program developed by the Every Town for Gun Safety Support Fund and Moms Demand Action, and all involved in their endeavor to protect children from injury. Now therefore, it be it resolved that I, Stacy Kinder, Mayor of the City of Cape Girardeau, Missouri, do hereby proclaim November 18, 2022, as National Injury Prevention Day." Thank you all for being here. You're hiding behind me. Let's just, we don't have to say a word, please.
Sure, I just want to say thank you to the council in Cape Girardeau for doing their due diligence and making this proclamation happen, and I just want to say thanks to everyone else in the community, and we need to do better and protect our children, as well as everyone around us. That's it.
Thank you very, very much for your work. All right, thank you. All right, time for communications and reports from the council.
I'm actually just going to jump in, and just off of the past, there's a couple of proclamations. We really have incredible advocates in this, this community. We have people that volunteer their time and give their treasure and their time in order to just support all different types of peoples throughout this entire community, and so I just want to thank everybody from the Zontians, Zontians, to Leslie and Geneva, and Liz, and, and Rob, protecting our, even our small businesses, so just thank you guys. On the protection note, I just encourage everybody, like I've said in a lot of time, for now, for years, please make sure that you protect yourself and your family, especially the health of yourself and your family, whether that's vaccination, boosting, social distancing, masking, anything in order to keep the, you and your loved ones safe and healthy, especially throughout the holiday season. Make sure that you put health and well-being in the forefront of your mind. I would like to thank all of the city staff that made the Southeast Missouri State University homecoming possible. That is a big endeavor with lots of people, and students all over the place, and floats going all throughout town and everything, and I know that that takes a huge amount of city effort to, to organize it, and, or to help with the organization, but then also police it, and deal with any of the repercussions that come after homecoming. So, that's definitely something I wanted to thank everyone about. And you all noticed that there's one fewer person over on the side dais over there. I did want to thank, even though she's not here, Molly Mayner, for her service to the City of Cape Girardeau. Molly has taken a different position in the Memphis suburban area, and over the years, I've really gotten to know Molly's work here at the City of Cape. She is a fantastic talent. She's done some really great stuff here in the City of Cape Girardeau, so I just wanted to thank her for all of her efforts over the years, thank her for her service, and wish her well in her new position.
Absolutely. Thanks, Dan.
Yeah, I'd also like to make an announcement. Our organization, Port, is having a unlocking the door to home ownership in Shawnee Center on Thursday from 5 to 7, so we had a chance to talk with community members, lenders, realtors, insurers, and they will be on hand if you have any questions or any concerns about taking home ownership to the next level. So, that's something that our organization is responsible for, to help revitalize South Cape, which coincides with the, of the work we're doing with the city, so.
I just wanted to offer my condolences to Robbie in the passing of his dad, very sorry. And also, tomorrow is election day, so don't forget to get out and vote.
Anyone else down there?
I would, I want to thank Doug Gannon, Cade, Scott, and Penny Williams. There were probably almost 100 soccer teams in town this weekend, and that was all my weekend. But, no, a great tournament, and all ages from pre-kindergarten all the way up to high school age, so, great boost for the local economy, and, and as always, so organized, and staff did a great job. Please pass that on to staff.
All right. I've got a few things to highlight. First, also on Thursday, is the Parks and Rec Foundation's spaghetti dinner, this Thursday, November 10th. It's going to be at the Arena Building from 11:00 AM until 7:00 PM, so lunch and dinner, pasta, obviously, desserts, garlic bread, drinks, and there is dine-in or curbside pickup happening. Done, Doug, not, no deliveries, like there have been?
There is delivery.
There is delivery as well. Call the park department if you need to get that arranged? Okay.
19 to deliver.
Wow, yeah. It's a major operation, folks, and I can tell you, it's a, it's a major fundraiser also for the, for the foundation, which does a lot to supplement our park department in things like youth sports scholarships, and, you know, equipment, playground equipment, all sorts of things. So, a really great fundraiser and a great meal. And I'd also like to point everyone's attention to this month's Bee Magazine, put out by The Missourian, where there's an article in there that spells out the restructuring of the area magnet. Magnet is relaunching as CMO Ready, and will be creating a new focus and new methods to focus on our, our entire area's economic development. This focus will be in the areas of vocational trades, digital trades, entrepreneurship and innovation, and business recruitment and retention. So, please check that article out, either the paper version or online, and, and I just wanted to kind of let the, the whole community know that the work that CMO Ready will be doing in the future will probably have an impact on most people, whether you realize it or not. So, they're doing some really neat, neat, make, implementing some neat changes, and I think our entire region is really going to benefit. And one last item, if you are not busy this Friday night, you can come cheer on the Cape Tigers football team, who are finding themselves in the district championship here at Tiger Surprisingly, they are not playing against the Jackson Indians, which was predicted for quite a while, but last Friday, our neighbors to the west found themselves experiencing an upset by the Poplar Bluff Mules. So, the Tigers will be taking on the Mules on Friday night. Yes, I am a little too delighted to be saying that, but it is what it is. So, I know they're really trying to create a, a neat community event, there's going to be a tailgate before that, so bring the whole family out. It'll be a fun community event.
Mayor, they will be giving out some free tickets, hopefully between 500 and 1,000 tickets, hopefully, so...
If you attend the tailgate.
Yeah.
Right?
Yep, so...
Yeah, yeah, I think they're whipping together a chili dinner, maybe, for the, in the high school cafeteria as a tailgate, so, should be fun, should be fun. Okay, that is it for reports. Do we have any appearances by advisory board applicants? Anybody care to step right up and give us your name and what you're doing?
Good evening. My name is Dale Pingel, and I am still desiring to serve the City of Cape Girardeau on the Cape, the JC Golf Course Advisory Board. So, I've appeared here a couple times, I know many of the members, and so I'm just really looking forward to being able to help out any way I can. And so I'm just really looking forward to being able to help out any way I can. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pingel.
I'm Leslie Washington, and I'm desiring appointment on the Historic Preservation Board. As you know, I'm very active in my community of Cape Girardeau, and I think I would be a great asset to Historic Pres. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. Next, we will move into the consent agenda review. Dr. Haskin.
Thank you, Mayor, council. We added several items to the consent agenda for your review tonight. We'll start with number one. I think you heard a little bit about that earlier. The dental insurance renewal for employees for 2023. Obviously, we're going to be asking for a slight increase there. Number 10, Anthem Health Insurance Renewal for all employees as well. And of course, number 11, we want to amend the contract for ShotSpotter for the purpose of providing expanded gunshot detection within the city. Number 12, a contract with Flock Group for the purpose of providing camera automated license plate reader technology throughout parts of the city as well. Number 13, an agreement with DNS Sign Company for Shawnee Digital Sign. Number 14, obviously, the acceptance of public infrastructure improvements to serve 403 Ramberg Drive. And of course, number 15, the acceptance of public infrastructure improvements to serve 49 Airport Road. Mayor, that concludes the consent agenda for this afternoon.
Thank you. We will move into regular session. Mr. Taylor, is there a roll call, please? Here?
Here.
Here.
Here. All right. Council, we have an agenda before us. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Gard, is there a second?
A second.
Ms. Randall? Any discussion there? All in favor, then, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, the agenda is adopted. We have two public hearings tonight. First, a public hearing to consider a request to rezone property located at 39 and 45 North Broadview Street from M2 Heavy Manufacturing Industrial District to M1 Light Manufacturing Industrial District. I will open that public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak to that public hearing? All right, seeing none, I will close that public hearing. Secondly, there's a public hearing to consider vacating the city's interest in certain public utility easements in the Cape West Crossings subdivision in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. I will open that public hearing. Anyone come forward? Step right up, sir. Oh, nope, it was on, and I, there you go.
I said press to turn on.
The red light.
My name is Scott Rhodes. I'm here on behalf of Cape West Crossings, our Cape West Real Estate Hospitality, the owner of the land. If you have any questions, please let me know. I'd be happy to ask them.
Any questions? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Rhodes. Any others to speak on that? All right, seeing none, I will close that public hearing. We have a consent agenda. Mr. Young, will you please read that for us?
Bill 22-158, an ordinance granting a special use permit to Simo Corner LLC for purposes of constructing, maintaining, and operating combined convenience store at 2090 North Sprague Street in the city and county of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. Bill 22-158, an ordinance granting a special use permit to Simo Corner LLC for purposes of constructing, maintaining, and operating combined convenience store at 2090 North Sprague Street in the city and county of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. Bill 22-163, an ordinance accepting quick claim deeds and permanent utility easements for improvements at the intersection of Stone Crest and Brownstone Drive for a Lomack East subdivision in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. Bill 22-163, an ordinance accepting quick claim deeds and permanent utility easements for improvements at the intersection of Stone Crest and Brownstone Drive for a Lomack East subdivision in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. Bill 22-164, an ordinance vacating the city's interest in a portion of Hickory Street Radaway and retaining a permanent utility easement in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. Bill 22-164, an ordinance vacating the city's interest in a portion of Hickory Street Radaway and retaining a permanent utility easement in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. Bill 22-165, an ordinance authorizing city manager to execute a Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission Transportation Alternatives Funds Program Agreement for North Cape Rock Drive Sidewalks Project Phase One in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. Bill 22-165, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute a Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission Transportation Alternatives Funds Program Agreement for the North Cape Rock Drive Sidewalks Project Phase One in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. Bill 22-166, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute a Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission Transportation Alternatives Funds Program Agreement for North Cape Rock Drive Sidewalks Project Phase Two in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. Bill 22-166, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute a Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission Transportation Alternatives Funds Program Agreement for North Cape Rock Drive Sidewalks Project Phase Two in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. Bill 22-167, resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with Delta Dental for employee dental health insurance services in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. Bill 22-168, a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with Anthem for employee health insurance services in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. Bill 22-169, resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an amendment to the agreement with ShotSpotter, Inc. for gunshot detection technology software in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. Bill 22-170, resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with Flock Group, Inc. for subscription-based license plate reader technology software in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. Bill 22-171, a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with DNS Sign Company, Inc. for digital signage installation at Shawnee Park in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri.
Second.
Mayor, I'd just like to comment on 22-169 and 22-170, which are the ShotSpotter and the Flock technology. I am extremely pleased that we've had these brought to us. We understand the need for innovative technology, and I thank chief and staff. What I would say is I urge the chief to bring more opportunities for innovation whenever you see fit. We all know that our community wants to be above the national trend with crime. So thank you to you and your staff, and I'm glad we can get this done for our city.
I just wanted to make a note about bill number 22-158, the Simo Corner LLC at North Sprague and Lexington. I've heard a lot from the community about this. This is still something that some people are positive on and some people are negative. You know, the thing that here in the city of Cape Girardeau since we, this is a special use permit that, you know, only allows the current owner to sell to a new owner. And so to that new owner, I just want them to realize that it's a community in Ward 1, and they're going to be really putting pressure on the new owner to make sure that that's a safe facility and that it is good for the entire community.
All right, then, all in favor of the consent agenda? Please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? That agenda carries. We have five new ordinances. As always, we will ask our staff person to speak to the ordinance. At that point, members of the audience may have a few minutes if they wish to make a comment or pose a question regarding that ordinance. So first is bill number 22-172. Whoop, sorry. First is bill number 22-172, an ordinance authorizing the issuance of special tax bills for various properties for the demolition of dangerous buildings located in the city and county of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. The first reading. Mr. Shrimplin.
Hi, good evening. So the city recently caused four condemned buildings to be demolished. That work is now complete. We've received the invoice from the contractor. So we're getting ready to pay that. And as provided for in the code, we're going to tax bill those property owners to recoup our costs. So this ordinance just authorizes those special tax bills to be implemented.
Is there anyone from the audience who wishes to make a comment on that? All right. Thank you, Mr. Shrimplin. Counsel, is there a motion to approve bill number 22-172?
So moved.
Mr. Preston, Ms. Truxell, discussion?
I'd just like to say, I really appreciate the city staff's efforts in regard to demolishing these dangerous buildings. I think there's been a renewed emphasis on the part of the city staff and the council in regards to this recently, and I hope that continues.
Thank you.
Absolutely. All right, if there's no more discussion, all in favor, then, of bill number 22-172, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That motion carries. Bill number 22-173, an ordinance amending Chapter 30 of the Code of Ordinances of the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri, by changing the zoning of property located at 39 and 45 North Broadview Street in the city and county of Cape Girardeau, Missouri, from M2 to M1. First reading.
So this property recently sold. The new owner would like to use it as a home furnishings sales room, sales floor and warehouse, which is, under our codes, at least the sales floor part is a retail use. And that's not, this particular use is not permitted in the M2 district. So he's requesting rezoning to M1, which does allow it.
Is there anyone from the audience who wishes to comment? Okay, seeing none. Counsel, is there a motion to approve bill number 22-173? Ms. Truxell, Mr. Bliss, thank you. Discussion? All right, hearing then, none. All in favor, then, of bill number 22-173, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That motion carries. Next, bill number 22-174, an ordinance vacating the city's interest in certain public utility easements in the Cape West Crossings subdivision in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. First reading. Ms. Brunkie.
Good evening. This item vacates the city's interest in several public utility easements in the Cape West Crossing subdivision. These easements were previously vacated with the plat, but the insurance underwriters preferred that they be vacated by ordinance. So that's what you have before you.
Is there anyone from the audience who wishes to comment? Okay, seeing none, then, is there a motion to approve bill number 22-174?
So moved.
Mr. Preston?
Second.
Second. Ms. Randall? Discussion? All right, seeing none, all in favor, then, of bill 22-171, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That motion carries. Bill number 22-175, an ordinance accepting a permanent water line easement for property located at 49 Airport Road. First reading, Ms. Brunkie.
So this item accepts a permanent water line easement for Camping World, which is located at 49 Airport Road. It's being donated to the city as part of that development. So if anything were ever to happen to that water main, we could get in there and work on it.
Anyone from the audience wishing to comment? Seeing none, then, counsel, is there a motion to approve bill number 22-175?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Bliss, Mr. Preston? Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of bill 22-175, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That motion carries. Lastly, bill number 22-176, an ordinance accepting a permanent utility easement from Cross Trails Medical Center for property located at 2430 Golden Street in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. First reading.
Very similar. So this accepts a permanent utility easement for Cross Trails Medical Center located at 2430 Golden Street. Again, it's part of the development. They needed to extend some utilities, so this would give the city the right to go in and fix those utilities if something were to happen to them.
Thank you. Anyone from the audience to comment? Seeing none, counsel, is there a motion to approve bill number 22-176?
So moved.
Mr. Gard?
Sorry.
Mr. Preston, thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of bill 22-176, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That motion carries. We have three appointments tonight. First, there were... You got it right. Sorry. Two appointments to the Golf Course Advisory Board. Those two selected by the council are Dale Pingel and Nate Savarino. Counsel, is there a motion to approve those selections? Mr. Gard and Ms. Truxell? Any discussion? All, I'm sorry? Oh. All right, all in favor, then, of those two selections, please say aye. Anyone opposed? Congratulations to those two. Next, we have appointments to the Historic Preservation Committee. The three selected by the council are Brian Ballsman, Lily Clagius, and Ashley Roney. Is there a motion to approve those three selections?
So moved.
Mr. Bliss, Mr. Gard, any discussion? All in favor, then, of those three, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That motion carries. Congratulations to those three. And then for recommendations for the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. Those four selected by the council were Tamara Brock, David Cantrell, Percy Houston, and Mark Stone. Is there a motion to approve those four?
So moved.
Mr. Preston? Ms. Randall, thank you. Any discussion? All right, all in favor, then, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Those four are approved. Congratulations to them as well. And congratulations, thank you to everyone who submits an application for those. Under Other Business, we have the 2023 calendar to set for our regular city council meetings. And forgive me, what is the, I don't... Yeah, I should have, I'm sorry, I didn't print off a, I guess we don't have a... Well, it's been submitted. Yep, I should have brought the, okay. Well, it was submitted. Yeah, sorry. Is there a motion to approve the 2023 calendar as submitted by the staff? Okay. Ms. Truxell, Mr. Preston? Any discussion? All right, all in favor, then, of that calendar, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That carries. We now have time for appearances from the audience regarding items not listed on the agenda. This is a time where members of the audience may come forward for up to three minutes and inform us of concerns or opinions or whatever you may like to state. This is not a time where the council interacts with people submitting statements. And we are, we do require people to preregister if you wish to come forward. So those who have preregistered, first Andrew Ostrowski. Excuse me. Yes, sir.
Okay, hi, I'm Andrew Ostrowski. Okay, basically, I left Cape Girardeau in 1999, came back in June 2020. Really, in my opinion, nothing's really changed. And what, but I've lived in, you know, Dulles, Fort Worth, and different parts of the country and that. And what I'm looking to do is, I'm just starting here, because the public transportation systems here is, in my opinion, really, you know, nothing to be proud of. I'm trying to keep it, you know...
We're hearing you.
Friendly to the families or whatever. But about three years ago, I put a plan together, and if I could just pass it out to everyone, I could do it. I want for myself. And it's how you could fund, basically, upon public transportation without any cost. I don't want to go into details of it. I know we all got other things to do, but I can do it. I got contact information out here.
Great, thank you.
Absolutely. Sure.
Sure.
Anyone? And actually, you know, I mean, it's the work for any city, but again, I'm just here vice versa, so.
Okay, thank you. Are you done, are you done with your comments then?
Yeah, I wanted to, I would like to go with this in another time, you know, after you operate it.
Okay.
Contact me with information or questions.
Yep. All right. Well, thank you. Appreciate it.
I don't know if you guys read it or not.
I haven't had a chance to yet, but I will.
We can have like public transportation or any city that could, but things have been, but we have to have a group basically to do it. It's going to involve not just us, but surrounding counties, probably maybe state laws have to be changed. And it's a big pro, it's a process. It's not like, no, yeah, let's go do it.
Sure.
Maybe I'm looking five year plan, maybe?
Okay.
Like that. And that's all I really have to say right now. I think I got one more issue on the agenda. My name under twice?
Something regarding pets.
Yeah.
And you might want to make it quick.
Or I really hope that law enforcement, when they see someone walking their dog, ask them, let's see your, I don't know, was pet permits or anything in Cape and your, what is it? Oh, Pooper Scooper. I don't, where I live, you know, I don't, when I pay rent there, I don't like coming to my mailbox and see someone's dog's mess there. So I think I think better than whoever, I don't know, who the commissioners or the police or something, you know, to kind of like enforce it because technically that's legally trespassed by the pet and it's responsible. Okay?
All right.
Thank you very much. Appreciate the time.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Next, we have Andy Layton.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the city council. As this meeting exemplifies, there are many great things happening in our community and many good things happen every time you meet to move the community along. I wanted to point that out because oftentimes campaigns are about things that are not going so well and we're calling out for things to be addressed. My campaign has been about the economy and my concerns about our economy going forward. It's about our state being last in funding public schools. It's about our state being last in funding teacher pay. It's about teacher working conditions, teachers being under attack for simply teaching the history of our country. It's about worker readiness when it all gets down to it because we're going to school to prepare our children to enter the job world and to enter society as adults. It also involves incidents of violent crime. Of course, you've made strides with the shoot spotter, ShotSpotter here in town and cracking down on the shots once they've been taken. The thing is though, this is about, especially about gun violence. And I wanted to point out because there's been a lot of talk in the media, the national media, about violence being an issue of one side or the other. And I just wanted to point out that among the top 25 states that have the most incidents of violent crimes, they are found in the South and in the West, places that have very poor gun regulations. And also very poor, shall we say, entire criminal justice systems. However, it gets down to poor regulations and Madam Mayor, I appreciate your comments over the last several months about the improvements that need to be made. My campaign has been about the renewable energy jobs of the future, ways that we can not just bring renewable energy here, but also ways that we can help through the state, help consumers to conserve energy so they can keep money in their pocketbooks or use it to pay for food or housing expenses as opposed to the ever-increasing cost of utilities. And finally, it's about abortion bans and about woman care in particular. We have very strong differences, I know, on abortion care in this state, but we have to look at the bottom line overall impact of the abortion ban that we have in this state, which is that obstetricians and gynecologists are going to be looking over their shoulder and pretty soon they're going to be deciding that there are better places to work. And that means that the women in our state will have less places to go for the care that they need for their particular anatomical needs. Thank you for your time this evening and I hope you will all get out and vote tomorrow if you have not already.
Thank you, Mr. Layton. Next, Damon Dillard? On the list? Not here, okay. And lastly, Cynthia Durgan.
Hello, I'm Cynthia Durgan. I live at 2824 Oakshire Circle, Cape Girardeau, and I'm speaking for street-level Cape Girardeau. And you've seen me before. The U.S. Interagency Council on Homelessness is a project of HUD. And in 2019, their study found that the majority, 63% of mayors, feel accountable for dealing with homelessness in their cities. The HUD website includes the USICH website entitled "How Mayors Can End Homelessness." I know that Mayor Kinder is concerned about homelessness in our community. I know that the obstacles to dealing with it may look discouraging to some people. There are ways, there are methods. Other cities are setting examples that we could follow. I urge the city council to, well, to look at this website if you haven't already done so. And I'll hand out this, it's just the first page of the website that has the address at the bottom. The other thing I want to say is to tell you about an aspect of homelessness that you might not be aware of. Often when people get out of prison and they're on probation, a condition of their probation is that they establish residency. Recently, I was speaking with one of the homeless people who comes to our Sunday meals and he was telling us, and you know, I've known this guy for a year and I believe he was telling the truth. He was getting his life together. He'd been sober for eight months. He was getting a job. He was looking for a place to stay and no surprise, he couldn't find one. He had been without a resident address for 12 months and he got picked up for failing to establish residency. He went back to prison basically for being homeless in a city that has inadequate affordable housing, no shelter, social agencies that are struggling to place people in housing, can't do it, and there is no second tier, no second line of putting a roof over someone's head if they can't get an actual home. I urge everyone once again to, you know. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Durgan. Well, that concludes our regular meeting. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Mr. Guard?
Second.
Ms. Randall? Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor then, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, we are adjourned. Thank you all for attending.